Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Browning?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hollinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Here.
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mike Cheek from High Point Nazarene Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand. Welcome.
Before I pray, would it be appropriate for me on behalf of all the pastors and churches to wish you a Merry Christmas?
Thank you.
Let's pray together. Well, what a beautiful time of the year it is for us as we celebrate the birth of our Lord. And in addition to that, we get to be blessed with all the parties and the food and the music, and it's just festive, and we're so grateful for this time of the year. We thank you that you have come to make a difference in our world. We pray your blessings on this meeting tonight. Would you give wisdom and guidance, discernment, direction in the decisions that need to be made? We're so grateful for these who live in our city, and God, I pray your blessings on them individually and on their families and all who are gathered here. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in this beautiful, beautiful place. We pray it all in the name of Jesus.
Amen. Thank you.
The flag of the United States of America, and the United Republic which stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four on the agenda is the approval of a motion summary of the regular meeting of council held December 10th, 2018, as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish of council?
I move for approval.
Certainly.
Have a motion, Mrs. Keller, and a second one, Mr. Shaffer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Item five is consent agenda. You may appeal, please, with this to the record.
Item A, Resolution Number 18-67, a resolution establishing meeting times and dates for citizen committees, commissions, and boards.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Certainly.
Motion, Mrs. Keller, and a second one, Mr. Shaffer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaffer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Item six is times set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, if you'll come to the microphone, and as you get seated, you'll give us your name and address. There you go.
Lori Hauck, 222 Nightdream Street here in Delaware.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Council members, my name is Lori Hauck, and I reside at 222 Nightdream Street here in Delaware. Thank you for providing us with this opportunity to speak with you, and thank you for all the work you do for our great community. Out of respect for your time and existing agenda, I will keep my comments brief. As background, many of us here today are charter members of the Delaware Community Center and have been members of the YMCA-run swim team since its inception. Additionally, as members of the Community Center, we all have at least one, oftentimes two or more children, participating in this YMCA-run team. It is our belief that the Delaware Community Center and their sponsored programs should operate first and foremost to benefit the community and the citizens of our community. Unfortunately, we have witnessed over the years that this is typically not the case. We have faced various issues with the local YMCA management and have attempted to address those concerns directly with them. Without fail, our concerns are summarily dismissed, and typically, we are met with one or more of a "my way or the highway" attitude that resolves nothing. Some of our council members were able to witness this firsthand on Monday, December 17th, as they attempted to act as facilitators during a private meeting held at the Community Center between YMCA Executive Director Matt Brunz, myself, and two additional parents. Upon direct questioning regarding a lack of leadership, honesty of staff, and the rapidly increasing discourse of the parent group with the YMCA, Mr. Brunz became angry, volunteered to refund monies, and abruptly stood up and announced, "This meeting is over." It was obvious he was unwilling to work towards resolution. As a result of that meeting and the central Ohio YMCA's management of our Delaware Community Center, I feel obligated to bring these concerns before you as a council to make them a part of your official record. While the issues we are experiencing are quite involved, in the interest of time, I will keep my comments as concise as possible. If in-depth or further information is needed, I am available for follow-up. For now, I would just like to call attention to a few issues we have experienced. We have experienced inconsistent coaching and practices. There is a lack of communication, and in some cases, no communication at all. This includes non-response to direct emails. Face-to-face questions are often met with "let me check into it," and ultimately, no follow-up occurs. There are poor accounting practices, which regularly result in missing funds. This dates back to a minimum of five years ago, when no less than $5,000 was missing from a parent fundraising account, and the local leadership recommended just writing off the $5,000 payment that the team owed the YMCA for the scoreboard and calling it even. Currently, there is nearly $4,000, which is due to the parent board account that has yet to be accounted for. Excessive fee increases in spite of increasing the number of swimmers in the program. The primary reason for this increase to our community members is to subsidize other swim team programs outside of Delaware. We are one of only three swim teams that are doing this. For the 2018 season, all age groups experienced a minimum 51% increase, with the 13 and older age group getting a 79.4% increase over what was charged in 2017. In past years, the YMCA has seemed to target members who choose to have a youth-only membership so their child is able to swim. From 2015 to 2017, swim fees for those with the youth-only membership increased between 96% and 147%, depending on age group. By comparison, rates for those with family memberships increased between 15% and 33% over the same time period. Family memberships may not be an option for some people, and it's disturbing to see the YMCA specifically targeting those people with these outrageous increases. To provide a specific example, in 2015, a 13 or older age swimmer with the youth-only membership who did the full season package was charged $385. In 2018, that same swimmer was charged $1,165. We also face strong-arm tactics and threats made to swimmers, as well as parents demanding full accommodation to newly implemented rules that have never been shared formally within the team. In addition, a known YMCA policy that one-to-two lanes must be left open for any member of the YMCA to swim recreationally are miraculously now no longer in place. This benefits the management's goal to place 150-plus swimmers into two practice schedules. While this may appear to benefit the swim team, it in fact increases the total number of swimmers in already crowded lanes at any one time. In addition, where is the regard for the members who wish to swim laps in the evening? There appears to be none. In addition, we have total mismanagement of personnel issues due to a lack of oversight and educated leadership. And finally, on Thursday, December 6th, an employee of the YMCA released inaccurate and confidential matters in a public forum, which implied criminal misconduct by one of their staff members. Upon intense questioning, the organization has refused to answer parental questions regarding the allegations. Organizational protocols were not followed, and in fact, Mr. Brunz confirmed that his staff did not know what to do, as they had never been in this situation before. Their lack of communication led to rumors, slanderous comments, and defamation of a man's character. This mishandling of a proven, unsubstantiated allegation of misconduct has opened not only the YMCA, but also the city, to potential legal actions that needs to be corrected immediately. Before I wrap up, one additional comment. Prior to this meeting, a mother reached out via text indicating she wanted to be here with us tonight, and she expressed full support of our efforts. Sadly, she said since her child works at the YMCA, she fears retaliation against her child if she was to be seen as going against the Y. The fact that she has been made to feel that way is just plain wrong. We understand that the city is in a contracted relationship with the YMCA, and we want to be clear that we do not believe that the actions of the YMCA are in any way a reflection of the city or this council. We also understand that this relationship fulfills a need the city has in not only managing the facility, but also administering many programs and activities within the community. We do not come here to make any demands regarding this relationship, whether we have three requests. Number one, use whatever means are at your disposal to encourage the YMCA to work in concert with the citizens of this community to ensure that their primary objective is to benefit the community. Number two, explore the possibility of the Community Center operating as an independent YMCA, meaning they would be independent from the central Ohio YMCA operations. This would potentially allow for a greater partnership between the local YMCA management and the city. And number three, begin work on a contingency plan if it is determined at some point in the future that the YMCA is no longer operating in the best interests of our community. This would allow for alternative management options for not only the facility, but the programs currently being administered by the Y. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and everything you do for our city.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to thank the parents for your statement tonight. We have been in contact with the interim Executive Director and President of the Y, Kim Jordan, regarding this matter, and hope to hear back from them. And I think your statement tonight helps to underscore the concerns that you have and we has as partners. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, did you have anything? I know you sent a couple of emails to bring us all up to date on it.
So, George and I were able to participate in that meeting with the YMCA. We were hoping for facilitation more than anything else as partners with the Y. The meeting didn't go as well as we would have hoped. I don't feel like parents were treated the way that they should have been, unfortunately. I wish that I had something else to report, but I was rather disappointed with the way that the Y responded. I thought the parents' questions were reasonable. I thought the demeanor was reasonable. There were some hard questions, but it's a really hard situation, and there aren't a lot of answers.
Well, I thank you very much for coming forward tonight and for all of you in attendance. We will definitely look into this and get back with you.
And can we get a copy of your...
Yes.
Copy of your...
I'll have that sent.
Just give it to the clerk.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I've none.
Mrs. Keller?
The YMCA committee is meeting in January, I think January 24th. We're working through some financial statements. Tom is anticipating an email tomorrow. So, George and I are working on that.
Okay. Good. Mr. Brown?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Rohr?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hollinger?
I have nothing.
Mr. Shaffer?
We're going to schedule a special parking safety meeting for the 7th. We'll have to send that out at 7:00 PM, 7:00 January 7 to discuss the potential temporary proposals for the home roads.
Oh, good.
So, rather than wait until February when parking safety is scheduled to meet, that means I'll just be basing it for that one.
Good, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item eight. Elaine, if you'll read this into the agenda, please.
Ordinance Number 18-109 amended, an ordinance making appropriations for the year 2019 and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, if this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public's safety, health, and welfare of the city, and further to provide lawful appropriations available for expenditure by January 1st, 2019, and as such, will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Mr. Stoltzer?
I've provided a little memo indicating the three changes we made to the original budget as presented to council. I think it was somewhat self-explanatory. Other than having more deliberation and potential changes from council, if not, then the ordinance in front of you tonight has been amended to reflect those three changes. Might entertain any questions you may have?
Any questions, say, council?
I have not necessarily a question, but just follow-up from our discussion last time.
Sure.
So, I was thinking about just some of the discussion that we had about... George talked about our history, and Carolyn, you mentioned that we've always been able to make it work. We do have excellent finance staff and excellent city manager, and we have always been able to make it work. But I went back and tried to look a little bit into our history and maybe try to communicate to you where I'm coming from a little bit more about this issue of a balanced budget. And so, going back all the way to my first budget, which was in 2009, we talked about a balanced budget, and we always kind of all had the same definition. And that definition was that our expenditures don't exceed our revenues when we make our plan or our budget. So, in 2009, that was the first year that I was here for a budget, and we had declining home values, we had reduced development activity, was actually the lowest in 15 years that year. And in Tom's budget message, I'm going to quote, "I felt it was imperative to propose a budget that was balanced." That budget had targeted reductions in certain departments. So, that was a really, really rough year. Then in 2010, Tom's budget message talked about, although the budget will be balanced, many department budgets are operating at levels less than 2,000 a month. So, that was the year of the wage freeze, if you remember. Another really rough year to create a budget, but we somehow balanced it. In 2011, Tom said, "The recession, we are told, is over, but its impact will be felt for some time. The result is a 2011 budget which is balanced." So, again, we took great pride in being able to balance our budget. Still a rough year. In 2012, our revenues were down 0.3%, but Tom's budget message talked about a balanced budget is again presented for 2012. He went on to say, "A balanced budget is certainly a significant accomplishment in this day and age." In 2013, Tom was pleased to present as a balanced budget again. In 2014, he said, "I can report to city council again. We're in the enviable position of adopting a balanced budget." He said, "This doesn't happen by chance. Staff has been conservative in its spending." These are exact quotes. I have them all right here. 2015, Tom said, "The budget is balanced. Getting there wasn't easy." 2016, Tom said, "It pleases me to report, along with being able to present council with a balanced budget, revenue growth in 2016 is projected to be enough to support modest increases." While the budget is balanced, again, getting there was not easy. So, our history of making it work is council and staff working together to be extremely conservative and working very, very hard to create budgets that were balanced when we started. It worked because we planned for it. That's going back, that's all of our history. In 2017, we were out of balance a little bit at the beginning of the year, but other than that, every single year, we have somehow came up with a balanced budget. And if we were able to do it during and after a recession, and during a crash of the housing market, during targeted reductions in wage freezes, why can't we now? I don't think 247,000 is an insignificant amount, and I would just like help in understanding how it could have possibly been important 2008, 2009, 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14, how we took such pride in it all of those years, and then just a couple of short years later, we're defining a balanced budget completely differently. We're showing expenditures higher than our projected revenues. We're adding a bunch of positions, and just wanted to make myself clear that all of that goes into my decision, that I don't support a budget, that revenues do not exceed the expenditure.
Let me ask you this. All those quotes you got were from when we first received our budget, correct?
Yes.
Before the end of the year, the supplement comes out. So, I'm sure when Dean added those supplements...
We ended up...
I doubt any of those were in balance.
Some years we were, some years we weren't. So, here's the concern. If we planned right from the very beginning to be out, how much further out could we possibly end up at the end of the year? If even when we planned on being in balance, we still ended up some years like, "Ugh, we still have to tap in." But this year, this is a plan that we spend numerous meetings discussing, and I just, I think if we found a way to balance it back then, we for sure can find a way to balance it now.
We still have that $500,000, or $500,000 that we just don't know what's going to happen. That's just being helped. That would balance it.
That would go back into the fund balance. So, that's where I'm basing my opinion. I respect if you disagree, but I just wanted to explain a little bit further that that's where I'm coming from.
Excuse me, I thought about this long and hard too, and I haven't agreed with her because I think on a larger scale, you put the budget on, Tom, I was about to say, when the budget goes on the website, when people look at it, they don't have Dean with them to explain all this, you know? The citizens are going to say they're spending more than they're bringing in. So, for me, it's a philosophical, you know? It'll probably pass five to two, and I'm fine with that. It's good, but...
So, did something change? I mean, did we change a definition or how we looked at things?
No. I think what changed was the economy has improved, our revenues are better, we have the ability to utilize reserve balances, which our financial management practices address as a revenue, as a resource. And we were in the situation this year where there were a number of requests made, and I felt as though those requests were meritorious, and I included them in there. I included them in the budget. And if you take a look at the budgets from 2000, from 1999 through probably 2006 or '07, there were a number of years where we utilized our fund balance reserve as a resource. And, you know, that was common. There was a period there after 2008, as Councilwoman Keller points out, that our development revenue was down significantly. We had suffered the loss of over a half million dollars in local government fund, as well as for any given year, $200,000 to $300,000 in inheritance taxes. And it was a more, not volatile, but it was a more unpredictable. And the practice of recognizing the fund balance as a resource when you're setting the budget is acceptable in our community and most communities. And it would certainly, if council amends their financial practices to say, "We're not going to recognize our fund balance as a resource to be used as far as the budget process," then we'll have to, you'd have to find, you'd have to cut the budget, or you'd have to raise revenue of some kind. But I believe my 2017 budget message, when revenues, when expenditures exceeded revenues, I did point out that we would have to use some of the carryover, we would use some of the carryover balance. So, I, you know, Councilwoman Keller and I have had this conversation. I respect her opinion, and, you know, we're not adopting an unbalanced budget. This is a, by definition, this, we're, it is, if you take a look at our financial management practices, which have been provided to city council, it indicates that the reserve can be used as a resource when setting the budget. So, but I think, you know, perhaps we could have spent more time on this early on as part of the whole process. But I feel confident in what is being presented to council tonight, but ultimately, it's council's decision.
I think it's important to keep in mind, too, that back in those earlier budgets, we had a 10% reserve. We now have a 17% reserve. We're talking about a little over $200,000 worth of difference. Even in a worst-case scenario, we're not going to come up behind in terms of revenue and expenditures in the year. We've got more than enough cushion there to cover, even if it's half a million, we've got more than a cushion. And based on our past projections, I don't expect that that's going to be the case, but in my opinion, because we've got that ability to do that, I don't see this as an unbalanced budget.
So, I view this year's budget as good, but I was, it sounds like from Lisa's description, Councilwoman Keller, excuse me, that the previous 10 years roughly were expenses were under revenues, and is that the case?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we took pride in, and then we just changed it.
I'm good either way. I just want to know what we're, what's our definition and what we're doing.
I just felt like at the last meeting, everyone was kind of like, "Where are you coming from? This is out of left field." And so, I was just kind of trying to give you some background of, these are the budgets that I was a part of from when I came on council until now. And so, that's just a little bit of the history of the way I remember doing budgets. Now, it just looks different than it used to.
But again, I mean, I know we've got that $500,000 that stays in the fund, but that can be used. I mean, we've already got the 17.5 or whatever it is in there, over and above half a million dollars.
There's no fear that we are not going to be able to pay the bills at the end of the year, that we're going to be out of money completely. But what does happen is, if we keep our fund balance, let's say that our fund balance was up like it was a couple of years ago, we might have a decent chunk of money to put toward a one-time, "Let's go ahead and take care of the roads." We have our fund balance skimmed as low as we can possibly, not as low, but it's getting close to being at 17%. I think we're at 17%. We don't have anything left over to put...
I can remember when it was 10%.
Right.
And I can remember when it was 25%.
But we can't, we're not addressing roads at all in this budget.
But we also, excuse me, we also have that 17%, and that's where we went down through in 2014, I think it was, and we, you know, took that extra money out, and I forget exactly what we used those monies for, but we said, "We are going to maintain this. We are not, we are not going to get back in the position where we have 20, 21, 22% because that's unfair." I, as I recall, the thought process was, "That was unfair to residents because if we're taxing them for monies and we're just sitting on it, you know, where does that go?" So, we said, "We're going to maintain it at that approximate 17%." Of course, there's always a little wiggle room there, but that was, that was where we wanted it to be. Is that correct, Mr. Stoltzer?
Yes, that's, I think I was part of the dialogue, and just to add to, it's not just the 17%, we also put 5% into the general fund, a separate fund, so effectively, we got at least 22% sitting there. So, but that was part of the dialogue about, you know, taste great less filling. Do we build up a big reserve and then spend it on something, or utilize it as we go?
Dean, is there anywhere, I know what that $500,000 is sitting there for. Is there anywhere that we could move that to another category and hold it for what we think might happen, and if not, put it, I mean, that way it would balance the budget?
Well, there's any number of different ways I could balance the budget. That's not necessarily problematic. You know, if it's merely that notion of we want to see next year's revenues be higher than next year's expenditures, I could make changes... than next year's expenditures, I could make changes in how things are accounted from one year to the next and not impact anything and do that and have a $500,000 surplus if you want. Again, the mechanics of laying things out or looking at, you know, it gets to be, you have some year-end issues, it's not an exact, you know, here is this at the end of the year and what I lay out is pretty much how things will play out and just showing things as they occur. But that $500,000 doesn't, you know, I think this notion of looking at 2019, I mean, I could reduce the transfer that we have increasing to the CIP this year and reduce it in 2019 by $250,000, budgets and balance. And the same amount of money is going to the CIP, so it's just a timing issue. If that's merely the issue, you just want to see that simplistic approach of expenditures equal revenues. There's a lot of other things that have timing issues that, you know, fundamentally making sure our budget is structurally balanced, to me, isn't just a snapshot of projected revenues versus expenditures, it's a continual type of thing. And that's why I've got that $500,000 reserved because I'm being prudent, knowing that we're going to incur those expenses in the future.
I understand that, but I also hear loudly what Lisa's saying about this budget going after the website and people saying they're already off balance.
Right, and like I said, a simple change, you have in front of you a supplemental ordinance, you're in supplemental ordinance, increasing the transfer from the general fund, general administration to the CIP by 350,000. If you change that to $600,000, amend that, and then the 2019 budget, the $2 million that is otherwise going to be transferred next year, reduce it by the same 250, 2019 will be in balance, based on what your definition is or how you view it. That's a simple change. The same amount of money is going into the CIP, it's just that I'm doing a part of it in December as opposed to sometime next year. But the same amount of money is going to capital improvements. So I said, it's, to me, I look at it much more broadly, trying to make sure our resources are what they need to be, but that we can do because, you know, Lisa may be correct. People don't, you know, they might look at it from that perspective, so that's not a problem.
That whole explanation on the website as well, you know, citizens are going to understand that.
And then this whole thing about this extra pay period, and I know taking it out of 18 and putting it into 19, is that going to have been, because the pay period falling on the 31st?
Actually, I took it from 19 and put it into 18. The other, otherwise payday would have been January 1st, which would have been a 2019 expenditure. And I moved it into 2018 because for 2018, our revenues came in higher, our expenditures were lower, so we had, if I wouldn't have, we would have been just that issue, paying it now versus a day later, all of a sudden we're $500,000 out of balance. But at the end of the day, we're still paying out the same amount of money, but if I would appropriated that in 2019, or we'd had to make $500,000 of cuts to the budget merely because the one-day timing and issue in the payroll. But I said, it's, you know, there are issues like that that occur at year-end and, but like I said, you know, I understand it, maybe someone in council do, if the notion is from that standpoint of others looking at it, you know, we can do that or, you know, we could reduce the, you know, the appropriation through other means.
I think, and just back what Dean's saying, so long and short of it is, when we look at that, those budget numbers, that is a point in time. You know, that is today, it's not tomorrow, it's not next week, it's not last month. So what's important, and I mean, you could say the same thing, you know, if you look at a company finance reports, you have to look at the big picture of it and you can't zero win on just one element or one specific point in time, but look and see what those, what those revenue and expense flows are and how they look in the broader context. And I think that's what we're getting, I think that's what we've lost here. We're looking at, as of the time we pass this, this is not, you know, this is a little cattywampus.
Well, but I think we're looking at a projection, not what it is today, we're looking at what we're going to do in 19. And that's why Lisa's saying that the expenditures need to be less or at least equal to. It's not just a, and it's a projection, it's not what it is today.
But it's, and again, that's all, it's just that, it's what we say, it's going to be at a point in time in the future and all you can look at is how healthy your revenue streams are and then how much validity you have into your expenses and your cost containment. If you feel you have good cost containment and you back your, identified your costs and you're confident that your revenues are going to come in as you projected them or better, which is, which is one of the things that we've pretty historically seen, you know, Dean, to his credit, tends to, and rightly so, underestimate revenue, overestimate expenses because that way then you have that additional, you know, you have kind of the safety factor there. So that's where, yeah, you may say you're a couple hundred thousand dollars in one percentile, but that's once you figure out, you know, well, if our revenues are higher than the pessimistic view we have and/or if our expenses are lower than our pessimistic view is, then all that comes out the wash.
And I understand that and I don't doubt that Dean can't figure it out, I just think on paper, before it goes to the website, it should be in balance. I mean, I get it, I know it, we've had enough history, I've seen it all, it'll work every year, but.
Guess we should, guess we should have had that business or the budget work session that we canceled because we would have had all morning to figure that out.
At this point, I'll just throw the boat out and see if you don't.
Yeah, I think I agree.
We're just going to keep spinning our wheels here, right?
It's just some philosophical differences, I think we just call the question and see where we're all at on it. I'll move to approve the emergency clause on ordinance 18-10.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the approval of ordinance 18-110.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Keller?
No.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10, the third reading of ordinance number 18-110.
Ordinance number 18-110, an ordinance amending the Delaware Municipal Court and Clerk of Courts employee benefits and leave policies and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 26, 2018. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
This is the wish of council, if you've heard it and you want to call for this again.
These are the pay plan, pay plans for court and for the city. We'd recommend your approval.
Make a motion to adopt emergency clause on 18-110.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10, the third reading of ordinance number 18-111. Elena, if you'll please read this on record.
Ordinance number 18-111, an ordinance amending ordinance number 17-78 establishing the pay and benefits for Berry's part-time and intermittent and seasonal employees of the City of Delaware and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 26, 2018. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Again, these are all recommended for approval.
Motion for the emergency clause on 18-111.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move the adoption of ordinance 18-111.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to declare an emergency on ordinance 18-112.
Second.
Can I read it in the record or not?
Oh yeah, sorry.
Can we just, third reading of ordinance number 18-112.
Ordinance number 18-112, an ordinance amending the management professional, technical, confidential and supervisory employees pay plan and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 26, 2018, which coincides with the new calendar year. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Yeah, this is what we need to amend. So I guess I need to make a motion that ordinance 18-112 is amended to say effective January 15th, moving municipal.
Strike.
Oh, I'm sorry, strike, yeah. I can't read your writing. Strike municipal clerk from the management pay plan.
So I'll read it again aloud, effective January 15th, strike the municipal clerk from the management pay plan. And that should address the timing issues with the other ordinance.
You said municipal clerk?
Council clerk. I apologize, council, yeah, yeah. Poor Cindy's going to.
Yeah. You'll give some big trouble.
Council, city council clerk.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion to amend this. Mr. Jones, a second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for the adoption of the emergency clause on 18-112.
Second.
As amended.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 12, the third reading of ordinance number 18-113.
Ordinance number 18-113, an ordinance establishing new salary rates for the mayor and members of city council effective January 1st, 2020 and repealing ordinance number 13-44.
We're just going to.
You looking at me?
Yeah. You better not roll, I didn't know if you wanted.
Okay, see, there's no emergency clause on that?
No.
No. Move for the adoption of ordinance 18-113.
Because this doesn't happen till.
2020.
Two years from now. So then nobody can vote on a raise of any of us, listen, council right now. Okay, so motion by Mr. Jones?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13, the third reading of ordinance 18-114. Elena, if you'll please read this from the record.
Ordinance number 18-114, an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and service charges.
Mr. Solomon?
We've talked about this a few times, I'd be happy to answer any questions council has. This also does not need emergency clause.
Any questions? Any motions?
Move for approval of 18-114.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14, the second reading of ordinance number 18-117.
Ordinance number 18-117, an ordinance for the Delaware County Fair Board approving a combined preliminary and final development plan for the Delaware County 4-H building located within the Delaware County Fairgrounds along the north side of Pennsylvania Avenue on property zone R3, one-family residential district.
Madam Mayor, members of councils, the second reading was presented at your last meeting, I haven't answered any questions that you might have, we do recommend approval at this time.
Any questions? Would you like to approve it tonight or would you like to take it one more reading?
I'll move for approval of 18-110.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning.
Who needs to suspend the rules?
Oh, that's right, I'll move to suspend the rules regarding three readings on 18-117.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning, roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 15, the second reading of ordinance number 18-118. Ordinance number 18-118, an ordinance establishing new salary rates for the mayor and members of city council effective January 1st, 2020 and repealing ordinance number 13-44. We're just going to.
You looking at me?
Yeah. You better not roll, I didn't know if you wanted.
Okay, see, there's no emergency clause on that?
No.
No. Move for the adoption of ordinance 18-113.
Because this doesn't happen till.
2020.
Two years from now. So then nobody can vote on a raise of any of us, listen, council right now. Okay, so motion by Mr. Jones?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 15, the second reading of ordinance number 18-118.
Do you like me to read 118 also?
Sure. Go for it.
Ordinance number 18-118, an ordinance for Fahey Bank Company approving a combined preliminary and final development plan on approximately 0.81 acres on property zone B3, Community Business District and located at 75 West Williams Street. Ordinance number 18-119, an ordinance for Fahey Bank Company approving a conditional Business District, and located at 75 West Williams Street. Ordinance number 18-119, an ordinance for Fahey Bank Company approving a conditional use permit for Fahey Bank on approximately 0.81 acres on property zone B3, Community Business District, and located at 75 West Williams Street. And this is due to go to public hearing on January 14.
Correct. So let's move on down to items 17 and 18.
Ordinance number 18-120, an ordinance for Nutter Company LLC approving a conditional use permit for Blue Sky Car Wash on approximately 1.28 acres on property zoned A1 PMU Agricultural District with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Lot 2 of the Cofflin Crossing Development. An ordinance number 18-121, an ordinance for Nutter Company LLC approving a combined preliminary and final development plan for Blue Sky Car Wash on approximately 1.28 acres on property zone A1 PMU Agricultural District with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Lot 2 of the Cofflin Crossing Development.
And this will also go to public hearing on January 14 of 2019. Remind the item 19. Second reading of ordinance number 18-122.
Ordinance number 18-122, an ordinance establishing the salary and benefits of the council clerk and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 26, 2018, which coincides with the new calendar year and the effective date of the management pay plan for 2019. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
And this will go to a third reading, also on January 14. I'll read item 20, which is consideration of ordinance number 18-123.
Ordinance number 18-123, an ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city and for the further reason that such action is necessary to provide for purchases through the end of the fiscal year being December 31, 2018, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Mr. Counselor?
Provided the hearing supplemental on the packet and followed up with a brief explanation. Nothing in there that was surprising from my standpoint. We had talked about the pay period shift. Just as a note, because it kind of relates a little bit to that general fund reserve that we created at the beginning of 2018. I knew that that 27 pay period, you can predict, I can tell you when the next one's going to occur. But for the fact that 2008, we had a very good budget year, revenues exceeding projections, expenditures below, I would have tapped into that fund to spread that impact of that additional pay period over three or four years. That's one of the reasons of creating that fund is to help balance out things like that that pop up. But because as we got through towards the tail or end of the year, I knew we could absorb all that cost and not even have to tap into that reserve fund to do that, we can supplement 2018's budget and be able to cover that with 2018. The only other thing of any substance was the health insurance supplemental, which again, we knew was coming. Jessica took, Feller took over our health insurance management this year, and our costs just went out the roof. But we kind of knew that, we anticipated that. Now, we did have, I think I indicated in my note, that it's a big number, but we do have the stop-loss insurance. We had some fairly large individual claims. That's why we maintain that insurance separate from our self-funded health plan. Does have an impact on future stop-loss insurance premiums. But, so it's a big number, but we, I think we, a little over three-quarters of a million dollars of that was reimbursed back, and we're still in pretty good shape with our health insurance fund. Entertain any questions you may have.
Have we ever looked at going 24 pays?
Looked at going what?
Going 24 pays a year instead of the 26 for...
As far as pay periods?
Six, seven years.
Yeah, you eliminate that 27th pay period, but we haven't seriously looked at it. Some places pay monthly. I know the school district here, because both my wife and daughter work there, I think they made the change about two years ago to go twice a month. It's not, you know, it's just two times a month. But we could, we privately negotiated into the contracts that month.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions on this?
One other comment, not so much related to that, but the fact that we do have a 27th pay period, it has some impact on a number of different issues because a lot of our accruals or health insurance premiums that employees pay are based on an annual amount divided by 26. Well, since we're gonna have 27, in 2017, we have to adjust for that. Likewise, city council has a pay, and I'm gonna go back and re-review the ordinance that's in place. If there's an annual amount paid in bi-weekly installments, I may have to, you know, we may not be able to pay you an additional amount because I can't go over that. So that might have to, we'll run a separate payroll. So, but I'll, you know, we'll send out some communication related to that because I'm pretty sure it calls for an annual pay, paid in, by, you know, bi-weekly installments. I think the driver is if it's $8,500 a year, I can't pay you $8,750 because of 27 pay periods. So just make aware of that.
So that's two weeks free.
So, Christmas, no.
I know.
More than likely, what I'll do is, whereas the other employees will get paid December 31st, front pushers into January 1st. Like, I have to do with the judges too. Because they have the same situation, statutorily, they get an annual amount, and then we'll adjust that in 2019 and take whatever annual amount is there and divide it by the 27 pay periods. Now for you, that'll be in 2019. So, so you don't miss a pay period.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm ready. I'll move to spin the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-123.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, okay.
Move for approval of 18-114.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, okay.
Move for approval of 18-114.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, okay.
Move for approval of 18-114.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12, this is the third reading of ordinance number 18-113.
Ordinance number 18-113, an ordinance establishing new salary rates for the mayor and members of city council effective January 1, 2020, and repealing ordinance number 13-44.
Yeah, we're just gonna...
You looking at me?
Yeah. You might not roll. I didn't know if you wanted...
Okay. See, there's no mercy clause on that?
No.
Nope. Move for the adoption of ordinance 18-113.
Because this doesn't happen till...
2020.
Two years from now. So then nobody can vote on a raise on any best, best in council right now. Okay. So motion by Mr. Jones?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13, this is the third reading of ordinance number 18-118.
Do you like me to read 118 also?
Sure. Go for it.
Ordinance number 18-118, an ordinance for Fahey Bank Company approving a combined preliminary and final development plan on approximately 0.81 acres on property zone B3, Community Business District, and located at 75 West Williams Street.
And this is due to go to public hearing on January 14 of 2019. Remind the item 19. Second reading of ordinance number 18-122.
Ordinance number 18-122, an ordinance establishing the salary and benefits of the council clerk and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes effective on December 26, 2018, which coincides with the new calendar year and the effective date of the management pay plan for 2019. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
And this will go to a third reading, also on January 14. I'll read item 20, which is consideration of ordinance number 18-123.
Ordinance number 18-123, an ordinance supplementing the 2018 appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary to provide for the public peace, safety, health, and welfare of the city and for the further reason that such action is necessary to provide for purchases through the end of the fiscal year being December 31, 2018, and as such will be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Mr. Counselor?
Provided the hearing supplemental on the packet and followed up with a brief explanation. Nothing in there that was surprising from my standpoint. We had talked about the pay period shift. Just as a note, because it kind of relates a little bit to that general fund reserve that we created at the beginning of 2018. I knew that that 27 pay period, you can predict, I can tell you when the next one's going to occur. But for the fact that 2008, we had a very good budget year, revenues exceeding projections, expenditures below, I would have tapped into that fund to spread that impact of that additional pay period over three or four years. That's one of the reasons of creating that fund is to help balance out things like that that pop up. But because as we got through, you know, towards the tail or end of the year, I knew we could absorb all that cost and not even have to tap into that reserve fund to do that, we can supplement 2018's budget and be able to cover that with 2018. The only other thing of any substance was the health insurance supplemental, which again, we knew was coming. Jessica took, Feller took over our health insurance management this year, and our costs just went out the roof. But we kind of knew that, we anticipated that. Now, we did have, I think I indicated in my note, that it's a big number, but we do have the stop-loss insurance. We had some fairly large individual claims. That's why we maintain that insurance separate from our self-funded health plan. Does have an impact on future stop-loss insurance premiums. But, so it's a big number, but we, I think we, a little over three-quarters of a million dollars of that was reimbursed back, and we're still in pretty good shape with our health insurance fund. Entertain any questions you may have.
Have we ever looked at going 24 pays?
Looked at going what?
Going 24 pays a year instead of the 26 for...
As far as pay periods?
Six, seven years.
Yeah, you eliminate that 27th pay period, but we haven't seriously looked at it. Some places pay monthly. I know the school district here, because both my wife and daughter work there, I think they made the change about two years ago to go twice a month. It's not, you know, it's just two times a month. But we could, we privately negotiated into the contracts that month.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions on this?
One other comment, not so much related to that, but the fact that we do have a 27th pay period, it has some impact on a number of different issues because a lot of our accruals or health insurance premiums that employees pay are based on an annual amount divided by 26. Well, since we're gonna have 27, in 2017, we have to adjust for that. Likewise, city council has a pay, and I'm gonna go back and re-review the ordinance that's in place. If there's an annual amount paid in bi-weekly installments, I may have to, you know, we may not be able to pay you an additional amount because I can't go over that. So that might have to, we'll run a separate payroll. So, but I'll, you know, we'll send out some communication related to that because I'm pretty sure it calls for an annual pay, paid in, by, you know, bi-weekly installments. I think the driver is if it's $8,500 a year, I can't pay you $8,750 because of 27 pay periods. So just make aware of that.
So that's two weeks free.
So, Christmas, no.
I know.
More than likely, what I'll do is, whereas the other employees will get paid December 31st, front pushers into January 1st. Like, I have to do with the judges too. Because they have the same situation, statutorily, they get an annual amount, and then we'll adjust that in 2019 and take whatever annual amount is there and divide it by the 27 pay periods. Now for you, that'll be in 2019. So, so you don't miss a pay period.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm ready. I'll move to spin the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 18-123.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.